Everyone, welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. Welcome back after a long holiday weekend. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, there's an item I would like to discuss, and maybe we could do it under Old Business, but it's the nuisance declaration we had from two weeks ago. I'd like to bring that up at some point. And not necessarily that we would take action, but would this be something we should add to the agenda, or shall we just wait till Old Business?
I think you'll just want to just go ahead and talk about it under Old Business if you'd like to.
That's fine. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to approve the meeting minutes from August 27, 2019. First, the Minnehaha County Commission minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in, Commissioner Barth.
I can't remember the last time we had all five commissioners at a joint meeting with the city, so congratulations to you for it.
Okay, so first we have a motion and a second on the Minnehaha County Commission minutes. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, I consider a motion on the joint Minnehaha County and City of Sioux Falls minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, our bills to be paid in the amount of $777,565.11.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
This week's bills include 25 occurrences of decedent transport going to MedStar, $200 apiece. That's a significant number, in my view.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is item four. Note the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for July 2019 is available for your review. Next item is I consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Carrie Deaver, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have two special items for you. The first is a request to recognize significant employee anniversaries for September 2018. And we only have four this month. We've got Tyler Gronk in Facilities celebrating five years of service, Jason Oninson in the Sheriff's Office celebrating 10, and then Justin Seeler in Air Guard celebrating 20, and Tom Rabb in the State's Attorney's Office also celebrating 20 years of service. I don't believe we have anyone with us, but again, what?
Small but grid group. We appreciate all that service.
Thanks. The next item I have is to record the county volunteers for August 2019. You'll see that it's a really long list. Again, I keep waiting for us to hit 300, but we're 16 shy. But 284 volunteers is a lot to be thankful for.
It's always a very impressive list, lots, like you said, to be thankful for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to the next item. It's item six, abatements recommended for approval, and there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, and there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise lien, and there are none. So this brings us to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning. I can't seem to get rid of that, but anyhow, I see you are looking with fear and trepidation when I-
You know what? We all know you, but I think you do have to identify yourself and give your address. Sorry.
Colby, citizen of Sioux Falls. I've had a long history of watching this particular body. I remembered first coming to meetings and watching the county commission. It was either 1982 or '83, after my wife and I returned from a four-month trip to Southeast Asia. So I've watched this body in three different locations, this being the final one, but down the hall to the right, and downstairs behind the glass block area. Anyhow, so you can't be part of this organization for that long a period of time without having a certain amount of interest and investment. It's kind of like, I suppose, like being a parent, you never quite quit being one. You never quite lose interest in what the body does. We used to have citizen input once in a while with people here who didn't have an axe, ox, or dog. Axe to grind, ox that was gored, or a dog in the fight. Morris Murphy, who was the president of the unions at Morel and Dutch Loos for a number of years, I think it was at least five years, would come and they would offer opinion. Well, so when you've been part of this, people will ask you questions when you aren't any longer part of the body. And you did an action last week dealing with joint jurisdiction. And before I give a response to the person, as I understand it, the joint jurisdiction does nothing as long as the person's land use does not change because they are grandfathered in. And so therefore, if they don't change the land use or do anything that's outside of the ordinance that was in play when the joint jurisdiction was granted, even if it was like giving one dwelling per quarter, quarter, that would still come into play. It's, the city has no jurisdiction on that because that's part of the old ordinance and they were grandfathered in. So if I am correct, I will transmit that. The other question that I had deals with the emergency access, because I have a vested interest in another place that has the same thing with an emergency access, is what are the parameters, what are the responsibilities of the county when they grant the emergency access? How will that play with the arboretum and the park there? Who has access to come and go? When can they come and go? And what is the cost that will be incurred, or incurred rather, by the county for having that granted? And that's something that I suppose Ms. Gillespie will have to render because it's information for yourself, but it would be information for those of us that have an interest in the arboretum and the park is what all takes place. And finally, I wish to congratulate the county, or maybe it's the SO, the Sheriff's Department, because they have the two gentlemen who stood at attention at Steve Reese's memorial service. I was very impressed, and I was grateful to see that the county took the initiative and stood and did that in honor of his service. And with that, I have a call that just happened, and it relates to a defibrillator or pacemaker that's being installed my brother this morning. Thank you for your attention. And as I said, it's a 1982, '83, that's a long time ago. All of you were younger. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here today who'd like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? All right. That takes us to regular business. First item of business today is a budget hearing for the fiscal year 2020 county budget. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Per state law, counties are required to hold a budget hearing the Tuesday after, or the first Tuesday in September, which is the reason why we're doing this today, to kind of bring everybody back up to date again, because you haven't talked about budget for a few weeks. The commission held three budget work sessions in June and presented the provisional budget on July 30. And just to lay out the next few weeks, you will be meeting next week. The week afterward, you don't meet. And then the following week is when you will adopt the final budget for 2021, 2020, sorry. Attached to your documents is a means of finance. That is the same means of finance that you passed as part of the provisional budget. At that time, you were proposing a budget of $92 million with a general fund cash applied of $4.83 million and opting out for an additional $1.9 million. The second document that you have is labeled General Fund Cash Applied Analysis for this hearing today, and I'm going to ask Kim Adamson in a few minutes to come up and address those changes. The general fund is the workhorse for the county, and as such, it's the one that we pay an awful lot of attention to and are contending to refine that budget as we go through. There's not a lot of, by the time you get to the end of the dollars, there's not a huge amount of change in a $92 million budget, but there is some updates that are out there. The last sheet that you have is the building fund, and we had a last, couple last-minute changes on that that I'm going to ask Kim to go through also. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim. She will take you through the minutia of a few last-minute pieces of information that come through.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm going to ask everybody to refer to the cash applied analysis for the general fund, and we can talk through the various budget adjustments that are being proposed this morning for your consideration. At the top of this analysis, you can see a recap of the provisional budget that was passed in July. It includes $63 million in projected revenues. Those revenues include a levy, levying $1.9 million of the 2019 opt-out that was passed in July. The budgeted appropriations were $64,400,000, arriving at a cash applied number for the provisional budget of almost $4.4 million, $4,383,910. Then if we look to the bottom of this analysis, there are a number of adjustments we're proposing in revenues and appropriations. We'll talk about the revenues first. We did, our values for the county were certified by the Department of Revenue, and we had a slight adjustment for centrally assessed utilities, which will raise our property taxes by $3,300 in the, in the general fund, so not a significant change there. In relation to some of the personnel projection changes, the air guard contract will be reduced by just over $6,000. There was some additional revenue identified in the juvenile alternatives program, shelter care revenue that are billed to partner counties. This is a new revenue stream that just began in the second quarter of 2019, and so Jamie has provided us a projection of $180,000 to be built into 2020 for these revenues. We are being reimbursed. The next two items relate to the MacArthur grant funds. The first being a reimbursement from Lincoln County for a pre-trial coordinator position. It's a partial reimbursement. We have billed this amount for 2019 as well, and Lincoln County has already paid this amount, so we just want to get this built into 2020. And then we have $350,000 from, coming from the MacArthur grant that was actually awarded to us early this year. We received the first of two $350,000 installments back in February. This is building in that revenue for 2020. Now, associated with these MacArthur grant revenues, we have a short list of expenditures identifying where these funds will be used, and those are summarized in the first several lines in the appropriations section. They total $378,498. The first and largest item is our contract with USD for $221,000. We will be eliminating the commission program development officer position, and then creating a community project coordinator in the sheriff's office, an alliance case worker position in human services. That position was approved by this board about six weeks ago for hire in 2019, so this is just building that position in for 2020. We'll be reimbursing the City of Sioux Falls for a case manager position, and then we have some additional operating costs of community engagement and training, some data tools, meetings and travel, and some meeting facilitation by a consulting firm. Again, those, those several items total $378,000. So the, the revenue and appropriations associated with this grant are basically a wash to the general fund. The next item on the appropriations list is a reduction to the payroll projection of We migrated to the Munis payroll software on July 1, and at that point, prior, to build the provisional budget, we used a projection coming out of our legacy software. After July 1, we created a projection in Munis. Munis is quite a bit more precise in the way it calculates our employee costs, most specifically in the area of payroll taxes. So when Munis calculates our social security liability, it adjusts that liability for the impact of the employee's health insurance. So basically, it calculates a lower tax liability because it does factor that adjustment into the calculation. Our previous software did not do that, and that really is the, that accounts for the entire difference between the HTE projection and the Munis projection. We are recommending that we adopt the Munis projection so that we can have all of our financial data residing in the new software for the 2020 budget cycle. The next item on the list is work comp. We received some new information from our carrier doing our renewal that we're going to experience about a 12% increase in our work comp rates based on our loss ratios and numbers of claims. We had a 5% increase built in. This is the additional 7% that we need to budget for. Then there's a small adjustment for our general fund transfer to the emergency management fund, and that's just due to personnel changes resulting from adopting a Munis projection for payroll. And lastly, there are two items brought forward by Commissioner Barth. One, to fund the Jasper ambulance for $1,000. And the last item is identified, really, I think I misinterpreted what he was requesting, but he wanted to request an additional $25,000 contingency be included in the budget for county ambulance services. We do have $25,000 already built into the budget for contingency, so it's, we can probably strike this item from the adjustments for consideration at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
So by taking into account all of these proposed revenue and appropriations adjustments, we'll come up with a new cash applied projection. The adjustments are reflected in the middle column at the top of the schedule. So it will bring our budgeted revenue to $63,780,740, our budgeted appropriations to $64,661,554, and we will arrive at a new cash applied of $4.1 million. If we take that $25,000 off of the list because we've already got contingency built in, our new cash applied number would be $4,87,000 roughly. I did also make an adjustment to our recommended cash applied number. I recommend that we would reduce the cash applied target by, by the $200,000, which reflects the, the difference in the Munis, between the Munis and the HTE projections. I feel like that our projection is more precise, and therefore, we had always allowed for that variation using the HTE projection. If we're going to use the Munis projection, I think we need to budget to a lower cash applied as a result.
Questions for Kim? Commissioner Heiburger.
Kim, I just was wondering, how many years have we given Jasper, Minnesota, a donation for, because I know we didn't always do this.
Right.
And so I'm just wondering where we're at with that. Did we do it last year?
I'm only aware of one other year that we did give Jasper an allowance, and that was last year, I believe, yes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I think my memory is that we never did until two years ago, and then we gave for two years, and they told me they had not seen the application for aid this year.
Further discussion on that?
$1,000 isn't a lot, but I just thought it was maybe, and they do service part of Minnehaha County, and I just thought it was, should be brought up as discussion because it is Jasper, Minnesota, ambulance, and it was their choice to come into Minnehaha County. I'm not opposed to it, but I thought it should be part of the discussion.
Any other discussion on that? I mean, I guess my feeling on it is that we, they do service some of Minnehaha County. Their calls are, are low. $1,000 is a very nominal amount, so I guess I would be supportive of leaving it in there. Kim, I have a question just about cash applied and the numbers. So, you know, our cash applied, you're recommending a $200,000 difference.
Reduction.
A $200,000 reduction. So basically, that leaves us about $200,000 in excess. So we had opted out for $1.9 million. We could maybe reduce that to $1.75 and, and still have a, show a balanced budget.
That would be correct, yes. $100,000 on the levy amounts to about .6 cents on the levy rate.
And I, and I recognize it's not a lot of money in a taxpayer's pocket, but at the same time, I think that we have had a history of not taking more than we needed, and, you know, our, when we opted out, that was, the idea was that we would be as fiscally conservative as we could, and we really appreciate all the work that you and your office have done to, you know, really fine tune these numbers. And I think it would be my recommendation that we reduce the opt-out so that we can, you know, show a balanced budget but not take any more than we need.
Madam Chair, do we need a motion, or can we?
Well, we're, this is a public hearing, so I think we'll have, I'm going to finish the public hearing, and then I think we could, could, this isn't our final budget, so I don't think we need a final recommendation today. The final budget would be the end of the month. Carol's shaking her head vigorously over there, so I got one thing right already today, so that's good. Any other questions for Kim? All right. Well, it is a public hearing, and so if there's somebody here that would like to speak on any of the items in our budget, this is your opportunity to come forward. Everybody looks pretty rooted in their chairs, so. Any further commission discussion on the proposed budget? Commissioner Benega.
Oh, excuse me. One of the things that we talked about last week in a joint city-county budget was the metro planning process and where we're at with relocation and potential operational cost changes. Has there been any adjustments to this budget at all for that particular conversation?
There has not. We've budgeted the request we received from that joint committee back in May.
Right.
For the additional personnel.
But those were assumptions at that point. Probably still are, but, excuse me. So is that something that we're going to hear more about, you think, before the end of the month?
Will there be another meeting of the committee, or?
There's going to be some special conversations about facility-related issues, potentially, but I don't think there's going to be any general session, so to speak.
If it's related to facility, that is something that we would most likely budget in the building fund.
Correct.
Which we do need to cover that project list as well.
Thank you.
So it includes the metro positions that were approved last week?
For the operating budget, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any further questions about the general fund before we move on to the building?
So just to be clear, you are suggesting that we reduce the levy of the opt-out by $150,000?
Correct.
Okay.
That was my suggestion, anyway.
Okay. We'll build that in. We can jump then to the building fund project list. And there were just a couple items that Mark Krins brought forward since our last budget hearing. He, and they're highlighted in yellow on this list. He's requesting that we budget an additional $20,000 for, to address the Emerald Ash Borer, and that is projected out through future years as well. And then a $20,000 addition for the highway shop, just for general maintenance at that site. Excuse me. And $20,000 into future years as well. We did reduce the amount of the contingency included in the building fund to $125,000 to compensate for these increases. Excuse me. And it does bring us to a slight deficit for the building fund for the year of $1,843, but we do anticipate that we will end 2019 with a cash balance in the building fund of about $950,000.
Poor thing.
Oh, excuse me.
Does anybody have questions about either of those items? I personally think it's hard to argue with either one of those, so.
So coming back to Commissioner Benega's question about metro, at this point, we do have the $125,000 built in for contingency. I know that any facility, any building reconstruction in that area is going to be a significant number. That is also something that I believe could be prioritized with the, the facilities task force and identifying sources for funding for that through that committee. So I'm not sure if, how you would propose we would want to handle it, or if we would want to address it in this 2020 budget cycle.
Well, you're absolutely right. There is a facilities subgroup that's looking at that, so I think we need to get their input before we do anything. But the other thing that needs to be discussed at some point is if it's a building project, the percentage of split with the city is different than a lease, which would be an operational lease, which is a different percentage than the construction lease, if I remember right. One's 50/50, and the other one's 75/25.
Correct.
So that does make a difference to us. Excuse me. I got what you got and Colby gave us.
I mean, I think it's hard for us to do too much with that yet, because it seems to me like, from what I've heard about those discussions, that they're still, they've been working hard, they've eliminated a few things, but they haven't necessarily landed on what the, the plan or the solution that they're going to work towards, and then it's hard to, it puts us a little, quite a ways away from a number.
I agree, but I don't think we ought to forget that whole discussion about where we're going to need to go to find those dollars.
Yeah. And I do agree that it's something that, you know, that's part of the facilities task forces to try to help us prioritize needs and, and look at the financing that we do have available so we can figure out the best ways to utilize that. Anything else? All right. Well, I think we've given some direction to you, Kim, and we will bring this back for final approval at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so that takes us to our next public hearing, which is to consider, consider the 2019-2020 retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine license for the Mighty Corson Art Players. Olivia.
Yes, the Mighty Corson Art Players have submitted an application for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine license for the 2019-2020 renewal period. They have not, I, sorry, I apologize. I have not received any concerns or objections from the sheriff's department, state's attorney, or planning and zoning, and they do have two representatives here if you should have any questions for them.
Okay. Applicants can certainly come forward and speak if you want to.
If you'd like to, if we can, but if not, we can keep them in.
Okay. If we don't have any questions necessarily for them. Is there anyone here that's opposed to this license? Seeing none, I guess I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oops, sorry, roll call vote. Thank you, Olivia.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to our next public hearing, which is to consider the, uh, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty retail on-off sale malt beverage license and South Dakota farm wine license and a twenty-twenty retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Emerald Pine Barns LLC. Olivia.
Yes, so there are two applications for this one, um, both for Emerald Pine's barn. One is the malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, which would be the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. And then the other would be wine and cider and that cycle is different, um, which I have, um, notified, uh, Jason Shanks about. And he was okay with doing the twenty-twenty period, um, for that license because of when his facility will be ready. Um, and he is here if you have questions for him.
I'm gonna need to accuse myself of this.
Okay. So you're welcome to come forward and speak if you want to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just one thing that I noticed while I was sitting here waiting for the hearing, the, uh, the notice of hearing, the address of, uh, our facility is seventy-six, twenty-one West Maple Street. Uh, President Street is my personal, uh, home address, so I wanted to make sure that that correction with, the president was changed to Maple. That, the legal description is correct, however, underneath that.
Okay, that is what's on you.
And if I, if I put it wrong on the application, then I apologize.
Okay, yep. Okay. It, can, can you just clarify the location, which I think you just did, but the location where the sales will actually be made? Is that the Maple Street address?
Correct. The lo, they will be located at seventy-six, twenty-one West Maple Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five seven one oh seven.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else? Any questions? Commissioner Barth.
Question for Olivia, I guess. So we're actually doing two different, uh, tickets here, so to speak?
Correct.
And, uh, one is just partial for this year?
Sort of. So the, so the malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, um, would be effective immediately upon the South Dakota Department of Revenue's approval because we're currently in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty period, which just renewed, um, last May. So it would make more sense to do that. Um, with wine and cider, they actually renew this coming fall. So since his facility won't be ready until twenty twenty, it made more sense to apply for the twenty twenty wine insider year rather than have him get approved now and have to immediately renew in one month.
So if I may, uh, what are the costs on those then?
Yes. So the wine and cider is five hundred. And then the malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine is three hundred. That is evenly split between us and the state.
Thank you.
Good questions. Any further questions? Well, thank you. There's, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here opposed to these licenses, this is your opportunity to speak. If not, I'd entertain-
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Both.
So we have a motion and a second to approve both licenses. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Do we need to change the address in the, um, consideration of approval?
Um, I don't think it could hurt, so. I think we clarified it, but you could go ahead and, I can't remember who made the other motion.
I'll make a motion then to approve both of these at the address of seventy-six, twenty-one West Maple Street.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously with one abstention. All right, thank you. So that takes us to item thirteen, consider a motion to approve, approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license for an event on September twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen at the Isaac Walton League. Sioux Falls Chapter, five thousand, North Oakview Place. Olivia.
Thank you. Um, Vicky Haberman has submitted a consume and blend alcohol beverage license. Um, her daughter is getting married at the Isaac Walton League on September twenty-first. And they would like to supply the liquor. Um, they do not intend to sell, so that's what this license would allow them to do is supply the liquor only.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
So there's no cost to the applicant on this?
Correct.
Um, if I have a Super Bowl party, do I need to get that same permit?
Um, it is my understanding that the reason this is necessary is because it's on a public property. The Isaac Walton League is a nonprofit organization. So it's my understanding that that is why.
Thank you.
But if you have a Super Bowl party, we should all be invited.
Yes.
Put it on the calendar.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next item is item fourteen, consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign an amendment to the Lincoln County two thousand and nineteen agreement for inmate housing. Ward Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Mike Mattson, Warden of Minnehaha County Jail. Uh, today, uh, like you said, I'm trying to get approval for an amendment to the, uh, Lincoln County housing contract. There's four things noted in the amendment. Uh, the original contract stated that Lincoln County would pay quarterly. Uh, collaboratively, we decided that would be better to do a monthly billing as, as opposed to quarterly. Uh, the second thing was there was language in there that specified work release. We no longer do a traditional work release program. We do electronic monitoring and Lincoln County has their own electronic monitoring program. So more than likely their, their participants would participate in their program. There is some new language on indemnification. Um, that went through the State's Attorney's Office. They decided that there should be a change in that language. Um, so that was their recommendation. And then the fourth thing that changes in the amendment is the original, uh, agreement didn't have a specific, uh, daily bed rate. We added it to it, to what our current bed rate is.
All right. Are there any questions? Ward Mattson? Commissioner Barth.
I'll ask a question. Um, is there an opportunity for Lincoln County residents to, uh, do their twenty-four-seven blow in Minnehaha? Or do they have to go to Canton to do that?
That, if they're a Lincoln County resident, they would have to get approval from their program. If they live in Sioux Falls, but they were arrested in Lincoln County, then that might be an option for them.
Would you guys allow that? I mean, great, thank you.
Any questions about the contract? Well, before we vote, I just, I think this might be your first time in your new capacity in front of the commission, so congratulations. We're, um, thrilled to have you and, uh, I know you're doing good work over there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You have more hair than your predecessor.
Try to keep it short.
All right, so I think I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item fifteen, to authorize the chairperson to sign amendment number two to the final design agreement with Infrastructure Design Group for Highway one forty-six reconstruction project. DJ Boothie, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Uh, today we have an amendment request for you for the, uh, one forty-six design project, uh, with Infrastructure Design Group. And, uh, when we initially signed the, uh, original, the, final design agreement, we intentionally left out a certain portions of the design, uh, to allow for some flexibility during landowner negotiations. Uh, a big part of this amendment is, is putting in the remaining part of the final design uh, in order to complete the construction plans for bidding. And then in addition to that, uh, because of those right-of-way negotiations taking longer than expected and, and being a little bit difficult at times, there is, uh, quite a bit of extra money, um, in this amendment for landowner negotiations. About thirty-five thousand dollars worth of additional landowner negotiations that were above and beyond the original agreement. So, uh, the current schedule uh, for this is to have the construction plans completed, I think in November, towards the end of November for, or, no, in October for a November bid date. And so, uh, we're hoping that we can meet that schedule with the current, uh, schedule of the landowner negotiations and, and get a bid at a reasonable time so we can have good construction prices for next year. So if you have any questions, I can stand by.
Questions for DJ? If not, I guess I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, so this takes us to item sixteen, consider a resolution to approve property tax payment proposal for record two-eight-nine-six-six. Carol Mueller. Good morning.
My apologies. I just had, somebody just sent me the email on Jasper, what they've requested and been funded. So if anybody wants that, historically, I was busy reading that at this particular moment. Anyway, Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Before you today is a resolution creating a payment plan for back taxes, interest and penalties on parcel zero-two-eight-nine-six-six, which is located in Minnehaha County. There is a total of ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. That includes interest for back taxes between two thousand and thirteen and the first half of twenty eighteen. The property is slated for the property tax sale the end of October. However, the former owner of record has worked with Auditor Litz to create a payment plan and has offered to pay four hundred and fifty dollars in twenty-four monthly installments with the first due on October fifth, twenty nineteen. The final payment would be in September, twenty twenty-one, and would be greater than four hundred and fifty dollars because interest continues to accrue during this particular time. You've had several of these come forward with you. We are, um, pleased that, uh, property tax payments can be worked out for these situations and are glad to see that.
Any questions? Commissioner Heiburger.
Carol, do you know how many are left that are still delinquent that have not worked out?
I don't know yet. I know there's at least one that's hanging out there yet, or possibly two.
So that's not bad.
Yeah.
We're getting there.
I think those are, those, it's just one or two that we're still trying to negotiate on, right? I think there might be a few more than that overall.
But that we're trying to create payment plans with.
Yeah.
And we do, the, the Auditor's Office works really hard, um, to support that because that is the best option for everybody.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Follow-up question. So if there's one or two we're working on payment plans, are there several that are planned to, to go on the auction?
Um, I guess I can't address that totally. I don't know for sure how many are slated to go on. A, a few that are out there. And, you know, our main concern are the ones that people are living in.
Right, absolutely. And we can follow up with the auditor, with Auditor Litz and find that out.
Okay.
Commissioner Barth.
Carol, so if they fail to make a monthly, uh, payment, do we immediately abrogate the agreement or do we, uh, let them skip, uh, for a couple of dozen months?
Uh, I'm gonna go, I'm going to turn to the resolution on this because it states, whereas in the event that the former owner of record does not pay all tat-back taxes, penalties and interest only on the property record in accordance with the aforementioned terms, Minnehaha County may proceed with the sale of these properties through the tax deed process. And that's in the fall of the year when we do that.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Okay, so that takes us to, uh, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Not? Um, new business? Any new business? How about old business? Commissioner Barth, you'd mentioned there's one.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, two weeks ago, we approved a nuisance designation for a rural property, uh, west of Booker Prairie Park, I believe. And, uh, I don't believe that we were wanting to have the bulldozers poised at the end of the, edge of the property. And today we had given them some time to respond. I don't believe we've had a response. We have, Scott Anderson is here, uh, from Planning Department, as is, uh, David, who documented some of the, um, problems out there. But I've also heard, uh, people tell me that it's not the worst property even in that neighborhood. And at, at some point, it seems like, uh, despite the fact that we've had a complaint, it doesn't mean we have to take drastic, drastic action. And I guess I'd like to discuss that a little further before we do.
I'm not sure we can take action today on an item that's not, um, wasn't noticed, but we can certainly get updated on where we are.
David Heinold, County Planning Department. I sent out a letter after the county commission meeting to the property owner just by regular mail. And that had all the deadlines in it as far as what he had to do, that we weren't gonna take any action until after September fourth, which is tomorrow. And so that was basically the deadline of kinda outlining everything that was gonna happen in that, that letter. And I haven't received any contact.
Have you been back out to the property to see if anything is?
No, but they're going out today, sending Mo out today.
Okay.
To look at it.
Scott.
Scott Anderson, uh, Planning Department. And, uh, the deadline was tomorrow, so theoretically, I mean, we wish, we will need to go out on Thursday because he could be a busy bee on, in the evening on Wednesday night and get everything cleaned up. So we will go out on Thursday and, uh, David can report back to you next Tuesday if you'd like. I'm gonna be out of town, but, um, and I understand Commissioner Barth's comments that there may be other pro, properties out there that, um, would warrant cleanup. But we do act upon a complaint basis and we've had the neighbors complaining about this parcel. So, uh, we, that's why we brought it to the commission. And if you decided that you didn't want to declare it a nuisance or that it didn't warrant cleanup, then you could direct us in that manner. And, and then we have, you know, gone through the process and we could tell those neighbors that, uh, the commission did not want it to proceed on with a nuisance or whatever. But that's why we bring those to you. So you have the input and there is a hearing and the applicants are invited. I mean, they're notified, so we can all discuss really what's going on out there. It was regrettable he didn't show up at the last meeting, the, the property owner.
I agree. Well, I think we'll, we'll go ahead and ask you to come back and give us a report next week. And, um, we'll, um, have an opportunity for some, for their discussion. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else under old business? Anyone who wants to visit about? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we will try to reconvene, um, in about ten minutes, so just a little bit before ten o'clock. Thank you.